Fifty-five will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Joe Graves of Cityview Church here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome back, councilor.
It's good to be with you all on this beautiful evening. I invite you, whatever tradition you practice, to, if you feel so led, to close your eyes and to take a few deep breaths. I encourage you to allow yourself to sense where you are, that we might center ourselves before this important work. Let us pray. God who is everywhere, always, and in all places, we trust that you are here. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and your blessing. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau, Howard, Dorrance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers, reserved for city officials or invited guests, may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Journal. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau, Howard, Dorrance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Here, none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and were published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Yes, President Harden, members of council, a letter from Councilmember Shayla Faber addressed to Council President Shannon Harden dated November 14th, 2024. Dear Council President Harden, please accept this notice or this letter as a notice of my resignation from my position as a member of Columbus City Council effective December 31st, 2024. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Columbus as a member of city council. Over the last five years, my office worked to create the first Columbus Youth Council, spearheaded the effort to amplify and fund Deliver Black Dreams, expanded our city's effort to protect immigrant and refugee families through Columbus Families Together Fund, legislative policies intended to address housing insecurity with the Housing for All Legislative Package, advocated for public safety reforms with the Reimagining Safety Initiative, led and passed an effort to end the sale of flavored tobacco to stop the youth smoking epidemic, championed a reproductive justice legislative package, and led and passed the first common sense gun safety legislative package. As you know, I've been elected to serve as the next prosecutor in Franklin County, Ohio. I am excited about this opportunity and I'm looking forward to continuing my public service career in this new capacity. It truly has been my honor and distinct pleasure to work with an amazing group of individuals who are committed to making Columbus a great city for all residents. Please let me know if I can be of assistance in order to ensure a smooth transition of my responsibilities. Sincerely, Shayla Faber, Franklin County Prosecutor-elect.
If you keep up a policy agenda like that at the county... Now, thank you so much, and we will formally take time to acknowledge and celebrate our colleague as the days grow near, so, thank you. Are there any comments by elected officials? Oh, sorry, I apologize. We'll go around the dais, starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President. A couple announcements. First, we will have our standing update from our Department of Technology about the ongoing cyber incident by Director Sam Orth, if he'll come at this time. Also, we'll provide any opportunity for city attorneys' offices, I see none. So, Director Orth, the floor is yours.
Good evening, President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorrance, Chair Bangston, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on our cyber attack response efforts since November 4th. Addressing the attack remains our top priority at DOT. I'm pleased to report continued progress. We've hardened and remediated an additional 45 applications, bringing our overall remediation efforts to 84%. As we've been saying, our most critical systems have been restored, and we will stay focused until all systems are fully restored. As of today, 16,663 individuals have enrolled in Experience Credit and Dark Web Monitoring Service. We continue to urge all city employees, residents, and others affected to sign up by November 29th at columbus.gov/cyber. We also began rolling out our Workspace One platform last week, providing remote access to email for city users on city-owned laptops. Full implementation will take several weeks. Our next priority will be restoring remote access to mobile email or email on your cellphones. We know this is an important service for all city users and are working to restore it as soon as we can and in a secure manner. In closing, cybercrime is an ongoing challenge for governments, businesses, and individuals. We remain committed to recovering from the incident, supporting those affected, and fortifying our systems for the future. Thank you, as always, for your ongoing patience and support. That concludes my update. I'm certainly happy to take any questions, being mindful of the ongoing investigation.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from any of my colleagues? Now, thank you for that update again, as we've always...
Sorry, Council President. Director, and I apologize, I didn't reach out. We got a, we received a letter or outreach from President Watson with NAACP last week, just asking about some specific updates on uptake on our surveillance cyber credit monitoring. Is there, one, is there a response back to her that we can just send back to her if you have or have not received that? And two, can you just hit on that one more time, what the uptake looks like compared to what we projected it to be? An outreach?
President Harden, certainly happy to provide more detailed numbers to your office. It's upticked, I want to say, since we last met, 37 roughly, so, as we have reported, it has been leveling off in the last couple weeks. That's why we want to just remind everyone to sign up by November 29th. That's two weeks from this Friday, so that deadline is upon us, and it takes 10 minutes to sign up, and we're just going to encourage everyone to do so. If there's any more specific information that we can get you in your office, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Now, my office will also work with President Watson and ensure that she has a link that she can share to NAACP members and other members of the black community, make sure that they are signing up as well. Councilmember Remy?
Just wanted to say, if we don't have any much more participation in that, would we consider extending it through the end of the year?
President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorrance, Chair Bangston, members of council, that's not something we're currently entertaining at this point in time, that doesn't mean that we won't discuss it before the end of the deadline.
Thank you. Any other questions? Right, then, thank you for the update, and again, as I said, no matter how small it is or how large it is, we want to provide this space and opportunity. I did want to highlight one thing that I think that the mayor proposed in his upcoming budget that we will talk about in the hearing, are those additional employees to our Department of Technology. I don't know, Director, if you want to speak to that at all, but I know that that is, shows the mayor's commitment to making sure that we are addressing the issue going forward. But I don't know if you want to speak to that at all today.
Chair Bangston, thank you for the opportunity. Certainly appreciate the additional 25 positions that the mayor has put in the proposed 2025 budget for the Department of Technology. Several of those positions, not all, but many of them will be focused on cybersecurity in particular, dedicated resources to help city departments in understanding their data as it relates to cybersecurity and their systems. So, as I've said before and will continue to say, as much as I've seen the technology change in my long career, it is still a people business. So, all of us in DOT and all 20 of those, 25 of those positions will have a cybersecurity role with, as I mentioned, some of them having a dedicated focus in cybersecurity and data privacy in particular. So, just really appreciative of the opportunity and certainly happy to answer additional questions, but looking forward to that budget proposal as I move forward to the city council.
Absolutely, and that, of course, we'll get into the details of the budget in our subsequent budget hearings coming up for the general fund operating budget. So, thank you for the update today.
Thank you, members of council.
Next, Council President, just one other additional announcement. Our office is holding a public hearing regarding the city's 2025 through 2029 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan and the 2025 HUD Annual Action Plan Planning Process. The Consolidated Plan and Associated Annual Action Plans set goals and define priorities for housing and community development investment in Columbus. The Consolidated Plan governs the city's investments of four federal grants, the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships Program or Home Dollars, the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS or HOPWA Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant ESG. These grant funds are intended to primarily support low-to-moderate income residents of Columbus. The hearing will take place tomorrow at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. Any individual, individual group, or agency wishing to provide input on the draft Consolidated Plan or the draft 2025 AA Annual Action Plan may submit comments to the city of Columbus at Grants Management, that's Grants MGMT at columbus.gov. All comments received by November 20th will be considered by the city prior to the city's submission of the draft Consolidated Plan and draft 2025 Action Plan to HUD. Please email again, Grants Management, that's Grants MGMT at columbus.gov in advance to request accommodations for the hearing. All persons wishing to speak during the hearing in person or via WebEx must email my aide, JP Dorval, at JP D O R V A L at columbus.gov by 12:00 PM tomorrow, requesting that they be added to the list of speakers. Each speaker will be limited to remarks lasting no longer than three minutes. The meeting will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and Facebook pages as well. And again, just want to commend our Department of Finance for the work that they've put into this, and there's been a lot of community engagement with a lot of great organizations that will be awarded this coming year. So, I look forward to seeing folks tomorrow, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I have one resolution this evening. I'd like to introduce Resolution 0307X 2024 to celebrate and congratulate the Martín de Porres Center for 20 years of serving the central Ohio community. The Martín de Porres Center was established in 2004 with the intention of serving the community through art, education, and spirituality. Since its founding, the Martín de Porres Center has expanded to offer services for youth and families in the community, like the Rising Youth Program and After School Program that provides tutoring and mentoring services to teens and preteens. Their commitment to fostering an environment of peace and intercultural connection in our community cannot be overstated. Unfortunately, the director of the Martín de Porres Center, Yahia Rose, has taken ill and cannot be with us this evening, but we will find another time to celebrate the organization in person. But with that, I just want to thank them for all of their work, recognize them as the center of the community, especially in the Latino community, and for all of their work in supporting our young people and families. With that, I'd like to adopt Resolution 0307X 2024.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau, Howard, Dorrance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, that's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Council President. A reminder for everyone that tomorrow at 1:00 PM, we will be gathering at Linden Park for the rededication ceremony of the Linden War Memorial. This memorial has been in Linden for decades, but because of recent damage from vehicles, it had to be refurbished and is being relocated to the park for where it can be viewed and kept safe. And we will be gathering to honor those engraved on the monument, so please consider joining myself and my colleague, Councilmember Remy, as well as the mayor and multiple veterans groups from across the city for this meaningful ceremony. And I also wanted to give a big thank you to everyone who attended the many Veterans' Day events that were held throughout the city last week. The new Milvets Veterans Day Rally was a huge success despite the horrible weather, and our Veterans Day softball game had a fantastic first year, and I want to thank all those who played, those who came out to cheer them on, the people who held, had resource tables there, and in particular, military veteran Eric Sowers for his partnership in this endeavor, for Mother Mills Diner and Sergeant Coffee, veteran-owned businesses who served food and beverages, and to my staff, Jacob Marwa and Jessica, who did not get the holiday weekend off, for helping to ensure that everyone had a fun time celebrating veterans and their families, and we look forward to doing it again next year. So, that's all for me, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. Press Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President. I do have a resolution here tonight, and I would like to invite Mr. Kevin Wheeler, the Assistant Director for Growth Policy from the Department of Development, to the podium as I introduce Resolution Number 030X-2024, to recognize and commend Mr. Kevin Wheeler for 37 years of distinguished service to the city of Columbus. It's my honor to be able to bring this resolution to the floor here tonight, and I believe we've got some photos from some of those 37 years of Mr. Wheeler's illustrious career that, judging by the look on his face, he may not have known we had our hands on at the moment. So, Kevin has worked as a city planner for the city of Columbus for 37 years, beginning with the city in 1987 as a graduate intern with our city's Historic Preservation Program. He did, after that internship, he was hired to work in the city's 1993 Comprehensive Plan. After that plan adoption, he coordinated the selection process for $225 million bond package and administered the first round of the city's Urban Infrastructure Recovery Fund. During this time, he was instrumental in obtaining funding for street replanning throughout the city. Over his career, Kevin managed countless efforts, including area plans, plan amendments, and many special projects like the development of the Shore North Design Guidelines, Downtown Design Guidelines, Downtown Code, the Big Darby Watershed Master Plan, Columbus City White Planning Policies. Basically, if there is a part of Columbus that you love, Kevin had a hand in making that happen. And if there's a part of the city you don't love, well, we'll leave that out here today, and that's someone else's problem here coming up relatively soon. Kevin has spent many years as a leading expert in growth policy, passionately advocating for responsible and fiscal sound development within our community. Kevin has meticulously reviewed thousands and thousands of parcels across the city, playing a key role in land use over the decades and significantly shaping our urban landscape as we've changed. It's really been quite the career that Kevin has had here in Columbus and all the different projects that he's had, such an outsized role in helping to shape our community. But one of the ways that I know this council and myself have grown to get to know Kevin even more in the final years with the city was helping to lead the zoning initiative, and this is certainly something that I'm desperately thankful for him putting the time in with this body and the community, our first step towards modernizing our zoning code here in Columbus, which will hopefully pay dividends for future generations to make sure our community is more connected, that we have more housing, that we have all the things that we need in a, in a city that is rapidly growing. And we spend many, many, many hours together with this body and with community members, and Kevin, I like to joke, was sort of the Yoda of land use policy. No matter how flustered the room could get, Kevin generally was the calm person there, although I think we, the Council President and I, got him a little fired up, I think, one time, just once. But even with that, he took that in stride and figured out what is the pathway for us to make sure that we have the ability to do what was right for residents. And I think that's something that really says about Kevin's career, was constantly thinking about what does land use mean and how do we make that work for our city and our residents? And it's been my honor to be able to work with Kevin, specifically those last few years on the zoning initiative. So, wanted to be able to celebrate your career tonight with this resolution and wanted to give you at least a few minutes to talk here tonight before this body, before you call it a career, sir.
Okay, I will be very brief. I know you have a busy agenda. I did not know those pictures were going to be used tonight. I would not have shared those pictures willingly. I am, I'm very flattered, I'm very touched by your recognition. It's fitting that I'm leaving city employment with this council. I've known this council better, I've worked with this council more closely than any other council president, and Nick, and council, sorry, Councilmember Bangston, President Pro Tem Dorrance, others. Some of you I've not known as long, but it's been, it's been great. It's been a great place to work. A lot's changed in my time here. We didn't have computers, we didn't have email. Front Street was one way when I started working. But it's, it's been a fantastic time to be a city planner in a city like Columbus, a city that's come of age, and so I'm really proud of that work. I'm also really grateful for the partnerships and the collaboration, the coworkers I've had that care a lot about the city, and elected officials such as yourselves who, who are here every week doing what you can to make it better. I look forward to taking a more casual seat and watching things move forward, and I'm really confident that they will. Thank you.
I desperately looking forward to the next public hearings for the next phase of zoning, and you just being a resident coming to tell us what you think. It's going to be great.
It'll be very specific input.
To any of mine. Yes. Do any of my colleagues have any comments before I move for adoption? Councilmember Bangston?
Well, one, I want to say that I'm surprised. What do you do like when you don't want to accept the resignation? Do I vote no on the, I don't know what I'm supposed to do? No, I, I'm just incredibly grateful, and you said Nick, because I think that's how far we go back, and I literally got my honorary planning degree from the school of Kevin Wheeler. And so, when I think about One Linden and Envision Hilltop, you were somewhere, someone that was right beside me that understood that it was a priority of our mayor to get it done, but also were there to help me and help guide me through that process as well. So, I'm forever grateful for allowing me to learn from you, to allowing me to grow as well. And when you think about 37 years in public service, especially in, I think, a climate now when folks don't have trust in any institutions, and oftentimes that is because of the politics of it all and the faces that we see that represent us. But I remind folks all the time that behind all of the politics, behind all of the rhetoric, there are dedicated individuals who come to this place every single day, who roll up their sleeves, they didn't put their name on the ballot, but they signed up to still do what was best for this community. And any part, you think about this, the city, planning and land use and how the city literally lives and breathes is critical to that. And so you've been on the pulse of that and have helped guide us through, I think, one of the largest, most transformational things that we will do as a city, and I'm sure in my time on council, which is changing our zoning code. And so for that, the city is grateful, I'm grateful. And sad to see you leave, but I know that you'll still be a resident, you'll still be engaged. But congratulations, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much, personally and professionally, for what you have done for me, but also for the next generation of Columbus kids who will be born and raised in the city.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Yeah, I was thinking back to, I mean, we've known each other for a long, long time. And if anybody's battle-tested by going through one of your area planning processes, I mean, I think we did Northland back in 2014, but, you know, to think about the community engagement that you were involved with, you know, from all those area plans to the current, you know, Zone In, you know, you were out there with the public just as much as any of us when it came to talking about people's property rights and what the future holds. So we thank you. I know the city thanks you. I know that it was always a positive engagement, maybe not always agreeing, you know, some of the residents may not always agree what we do, but certainly, thank you for all the work that you've put in over the years, and we'll look forward to having you continue to be a resident. And of course, we'll listen to what you have to say, so best of luck.
You have a Councilmember. Council President.
We should end on you. I just wanted to say thank you. So, and also, what a way to go out on top during Zone, you were like, drop the mic. My father-in-law is a urban planner. I don't remember if we had an opportunity to talk about this, but I remember in one of my first briefings, it was supposed to be 30 minutes, and it lasted like, well, well over 30 minutes because I was asking lots of questions, and you were so patient and intentional in sharing those answers and helping to also teach me. And so I think, you know, Councilmember Bangston, as you said, it's a master, it is a master class in working with you. And I think, you know, throughout the Zone In process, I know that there were many residents that were worried, that were worried about what this looks like and how this affects their life. And people are, you know, we don't like change, right? We're creatures of habit. And so I think having a calm presence that was intentional, that could be patient in leading us through that process, that was evident in every part of this. And so as Councilmember Bangston said, I think that this is the greatest gift that we can leave people when we think about our legacy, is how we leave things better than we found it. And so you certainly have left the city of Columbus better, and I hope that in this time, whatever your next is, even if it's a very chill next, that you have great pride and great joy in what you have helped to build, along with your partners here at the city, for future generations like my daughter, and for future urban planners who see what an impact they can have on cities like ours. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Favor.
Well, I wasn't going to chime in, but Councilmember Rosade Padilla laid the foundation. Some may remember that during my period as being a member of city council, I also taught a class at Denison University on the history of housing. And part of my curriculum, of course, included our city's history, sordid history. And my students had the opportunity to listen in on one of Mr. Wheeler's presentations. And if you all do not, don't recall, because Zone In took up so much time, in a good way, but a year or two before we even got to that point, you were laying the foundation with many of our outside organizations, our area commissioners, as well as doing internal stakeholder conversations to prepare everybody for what was to come, but to also provide the background why it was necessary for Columbus to take the steps that it absolutely needed to do to correct some of those wrongs. And you were unapologetic in your way in doing that. And so it was important for me to show my students what zoning was all about, what it looks like to course correct some of history's wrongs, if you will, and what does it look like to put that into action. And so when the students came to City Hall, they were, they had an opportunity to meet many of my colleagues, but also some of the folks with administration, and put some faces with a lot of the names that I had been talking about so much. And so thank you, because you inspired a whole nother generation of folks to care about something that many of us never even grew up knowing that this was an actual career that one could have. Thank you for your lifetime of service.
Thank you. Council President.
So I hope you can see or feel the adoration from this council to you, Kevin. To your point, we probably did work closer with you as an individual team member than any, probably any other person in city government as an individual. And first, I want to say thank you. I think all of us who work in public service know that there will be a couple key things that we, we hope that we'll be able to do in our careers, that will be part of our, building out our legacy. We all knew that this was that thing for you. And so thank you for entrusting us to be a part of your thing. Thank you for having faith. And my prayers, I hope that we handled it with the care that you, that it required. I hope that the finished product was as big and bold and as thoughtful as the things that you thought about all those years ago when you were studying urban planning. I hope you were as proud as the process of how you focused and led a community conversation that, for generations on, folks won't know the name of the guy who did it, but there will be generations of people whose lives are better because of the thing that you got done before you headed out. And so on behalf of this council, but more so on behalf of those future generations that will live in a better Columbus because of Kevin Wheeler, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, as a grateful member of this body and a grateful citizen of this city, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Rosade Padilla, Deah Cower, Dorance Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
Council President.
That was good. That was fun making Kevin uncomfortable.
Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight during my announcements, I actually want to provide an opportunity to one of our dynamic community leaders who works with our young folks. I'd like to invite Founder and President Zerka Abdi to end her youth from My Project USA to the podium to speak. You all can start making your way up to the podium. With the mission of being a catalyst for protecting and empowering youth by uplifting families through education, social services, civic engagement, and advocacy, My Project USA strives to uplift youth and families in the West Side of Columbus, especially on the Hilltop. The program recently celebrated 10 years of operation and has empowered more than 750 youth as leaders and advocates for their community. By curbing the pipeline to gangs and drugs in the Wedgewood Village Apartments on the West Side of Columbus with programs such as the Hilltop Tigers Soccer Club, My Project USA continues to set milestones in their investment in the West Side community. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Zerka, who I believe is going to allow one of the student leaders just to provide very brief remarks.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Councilmember Favor. I will have Bashir Ahmed represent us today. Thank you.
Good evening, President Harden and council members. Thank you, Councilmember Favor, for inviting us today and for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of My Project USA and the incredible youth we serve. My name is Bashir Ahmed, and I serve as a head coach of the Hilltop Tigers and coordinator of My Leaders Lab Program at My Project USA. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the city's, city council's unwavering support over the years. Your partnership has been instrumental in building a brighter future for our youth and their families, particularly in the Hilltop neighborhood. Over the past 10 years, My Project USA has made a remarkable $45 million impact on our community, and we have served more than 500,000 clients, including 220,000 youth. Together, we have successfully curbed the pipeline to gangs and drugs in the Wedgewood Village Apartments on the West Side of Columbus. We have transformed at-risk youth into soccer champions through our Hilltop Tigers Soccer Club, a program that has become a beacon of hope for families. This club has instilled discipline, mentorship, and a purpose into the lives of hundreds of youth, many of whom have gone on to college and become leaders in their own right. Let me highlight a few more of our milestones and accomplishments with the help of the city Columbus and other funders. $4 million in 450 contractors and employees, creating jobs and projects that uplift our community. $1.3 million into capital upgrades and property to enhance the neighborhood. $5.5 million meals and snacks worth $27.5 million to fight food insecurity. $150,000 worth of free vaccinations and health screenings. $30 million worth of in-kind donations passed to more than 200,000 clients. And most importantly, we've empowered more than 900 youth over the years to become leaders and advocates for their community, addressing guns, gangs, food insecurity, climate action, and more, 901, including myself. These numbers represent real lives changed, families strengthened, and neighborhoods transformed. But today, I must share the challenges we are facing. In 2024, we received no financial support from the city council. Because of this and restrictions tied to tandem funding, we've been forced to scale back our programs like the Hilltop Tigers Soccer Club. Starting this September, we are only able to serve 700 youth weekly, less than half of the 150 we had served in prior years. Each kid is only getting two to three days with us. I am raised in South Park, and I grew up in that neighborhood, and I know what it's like. And I've been trying to save children that were my younger brothers for years. I know for a matter of fact that the Hilltop Tigers not being funded can move several children back into gangs, and this could happen in days, not even months, and even as we speak. Unfortunately, due to the restricted reimbursable grants, My Project USA is also currently navigating through a $300,000 cash flow crisis, jeopardizing the sustainability of our programs, and we don't know what to do. Despite these challenges, we remain resolute in our commitment to serving our community because we have to and because we enjoy doing it. But the truth is, we cannot do it alone. We need help to keep our pantry open, our community resource programs, and our soccer programs up and running. Your past support has been instrumental to our success, and we are deeply grateful for it. We ask you now to stand with us as you are a part of our family. With your renewed investment, we can stabilize our finances, expand our programs, and ensure that no child, family, or community is left behind. Thank you for standing with us in the past. Let's work together to ensure the continued resilience and prosperity of our community for years to come. We understand that Columbus is growing, and we want to make sure that we're able to grow in a positive light. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Green and I had the opportunity to sit around the table with these young, dynamic leaders and hear directly from them advocating for their community, for their fellow student colleagues, and resources that they would love to have in order to continue the great work that My Project USA has done for 10 years. And so we appreciate Zerka and her leadership, as well as you all for being here today, and recognition of that. Councilmember Green, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, but we just wanted to provide an opportunity, number one, to celebrate you all, and then to say thank you for your partnership, and we will continue to do what we can to support this organization. That's all we have. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Council President Harden. All right.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Councilmember Remy.
Jeez, oh, Pete. Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment to speak about what happened this weekend in the Short North. Let's be clear, these marches led by masked figures are a pathetic act of cowardice intended to provoke fear and division. They should know, and I hope they know now, that Columbus will never succumb to their depraved ideologies. Such events fueled by racism, anti-Semitism, and violence will never be normalized or tolerated. They stand in direct opposition to the values of inclusion, equality, and respect that are not only the values of our great city, but of the democratic fabric of our society as a whole. I must say, I am deeply proud of this community, the real community and real neighbors of this city that have stood strong, brave, and defiant in the face of this evil. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Weich.
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick note to celebrate the students who participated in the Tech Core Hackathon this past Saturday. I just want to thank all the city staff, as well as community volunteers who donated their time to this important event. It was a great time with plenty of learning, teamwork, and community bonding with the students who are participating in the program. I won't announce the winners here today. We're working on bringing them back in December during Computer Science Education Week, so look forward to more then. That's it for me. Thanks.
Awesome. Are there any comments by our elected officials, the Auditor's Office, the Attorney's Office? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? May we now have a motion to waive the reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Rosade Padilla, Deah Cower, Dorance Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance number of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 2931, 2939, 2987, 2992-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance is 2945, 3009, and 3137-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2950, 2980, 2981, and 3040-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee ordinance is 2705, 3166, 3167-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee ordinance is 2970, 2989, 3082-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee ordinance 2988-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee ordinance is 2826 and 2868-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinance is 2890, 2898, 2900, 2912, 2915, 2928, 2930, 2967, 312, 3025, and 3045-2024. Rules and Policy Committee ordinance is 2924, 2836, 2837, 2838, and 2839-2024. Zoning Committee ordinance is 3053, 3054, 3152, and 3155-2024.
Thank you, Madam. Clerk, we have one speaker on the first reading portion of the agenda. Tamila Turner. All right. Seeing no speakers on the consent portion, the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 304X, 305X, 300, 301, 306, 308X-2024. Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 2703, 2847, 2858, 2871, 2892, 2951, 2995, 2997, 3007, and 3015-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance is 2861, 2976, 2986, 2990, and 3138-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 2878, 2913, 3008, 3018, 3029, 3068-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee ordinance is 2706, 2773, 3165-2024. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee ordinance 2964-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee ordinance is 2941, 2942, 2971, 3010, 3122-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee ordinance is 2412, 2889, 2925, 2940, 3168-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee ordinance is 2001, 2803, 2901, 2973, 2991, 3039-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinance is 2570, 2637, 2757, 2766, 2807, 2819, 2840, 2842. 2819, 2840, 2842, 2845, 2863, 2885, 2934, 2943, 2953, 2978, and 3084-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, Mr. Wesley Moore from Our Brothers Welcome back to council, sir.
Thank you, President, and the council members. Give me a brief minute to speak. My name is Wesley Moore. I'm the founder and director of Our Brothers Keepers. This year, we have served 360 homeless youth, the housing feed them, give them a place to stay for the night, served 44 youths Monday through Friday every day. In school, we serve 110 youths at Northland, Midland, and also London, and we serve 28 high-risk youths Monday through Friday, and also house for transitional living. And more importantly, we serve 60 youths in our entrepreneurial program that allow 10 youths to trade in the guns and earn an LLC. And I have two students in our program, and I would like David Saunders to speak to show how much is important that our program continue the entrepreneurial class and what it has did to his life.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Sanders, and I was born into a family with a void in it, a void that 377,000 other families across Ohio share, a void left by an absent father. So, as I begin to vocalize just how much this group has helped me, just know that I might struggle a bit, but OBK have been mentors like no other I've had in my lifetime. They've been more like family. They've taught me skills and lessons that have developed me to a point academically, socially, and financially that for the first time in 17 years, I feel confidence in my future. And recently, not too long ago, I was homeless, and they, no family ever offered me this, but they gave me housing, food, and transportation, and coaching to stay on top of my grades. And if you were to ask me what organization truly encapsulated the spirit of Columbus, I'd tell you from Our Brothers Keepers, I've seen nothing but progress, honor, and goodwill. And I could go on about the things that I've learned from the entrepreneurship program, and the after-school program, and the summer program, but I'll just leave you with our mantra: Building skills takes time and effort. I will invest my time and be aggressive toward my development. I understand that discomfort is part of the process, and if I avoid discomfort, I prevent learning and growth. I will make mistakes, and they will teach me. I want feedback and coaching. Thank you for hearing me.
That's pretty much it. Now, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak, and hopefully, we'll be awarded some type of grant funding.
Sure. I want to open it up. Any councilmembers want to say anything real quick?
No, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Moore, for coming down. And I know public speak is not the thing that you, we've talked about this, you like to be behind the scenes, but I think you got your spokesman right behind you. But just want to congratulate you and thank you. I know that you guys started off truly grassroots, working in our community, and it's amazing results to see what you all are doing. And I think that when we talk about this investment we're making, we see the progress in the big data, too. When we look at our homicide rate, when we look at all these other things, all of it adds up, and it's one person at a time. And so, thank you for taking the time to do that.
I just wanted to second, Mr. Moore, thank you, because I know that this is something that is a passion of yours, that you are a true Columbus kid, that you saw something in your neighborhood, and you wanted to do something about it, and so I wanted to thank you. But I also wanted to speak to the young people that you have here. Whenever we have young people come down to council, this is your house, right? And many times in this place, there are many people who are eons older than you, I shouldn't say eons, but much older than you, who are deciding your fate, who are making decisions for you, right? And it is important to have you here, in this room, at the table, that you can share your stories, and that you can advocate for you, and the things that you are seeing, the things that you are hearing, and the things that you need. And so, I know that it's nervous, but I loved what you said in your mission statement about discomfort, because it is that discomfort that causes growth. It is that growth that changes things, changes the trajectory for young people in the city of Columbus. So, I want to thank you for being in that discomfort. I want to thank you for growing. I want to thank you both for coming down here. I want to thank you for sharing your story with us, and for being part of this program, and for also for being a leader, and for being a role model to other young people who will see you and see what you have overcome, and for the absence that sometimes people feel, other people stand in that gap, and you are doing that, young man. You are standing in the gap for others. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Wes, I would just say, we work with a lot of different organizations. Our Brothers Keeper is the real deal. It's the real deal. I would encourage other folks to meet with, partner. We're going to have to, I think in 2025, have some really tough conversations around how we support all the folks out there doing good work. We're going to have to look to who is providing the services, who has the ability, who is able to scale, who is able to help us meet our specific goals around safety in our young people. I don't know too many organizations that are doing what you are doing. So, just keep it up, and we see it. We see it. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve these items designated as consent? By voice. Is there a second?
Second.
No, you can't. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 2925-2024, from which I'm abstaining.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Deocauer.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 2925-2024, from which I'm abstaining.
Ms. Green.
Yes. Yes, with the exception of ordinance 2637-2024, from which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Reemy.
Yes.
Mr. Weich.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes. Consent agenda is passed with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 2983-2024 to authorize the advance of funds to grants and projects of up to $5 million per grant or project, and to authorize the reimbursement of such advances on the receipt of such monies from the originating grantor or lender, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a commonplace government accounting practice that prevents the city from ending the year with a negative cash balance in city funds due to active appropriations. Periodically, at the end of the year, the Auditor's Office transfers money out of the income tax set-aside fund to cover any negative fund balances that exist. These dollars are then transferred back into the following year, once the necessary dollars have been identified. Are any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Reemy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2998-2024 to authorize and direct the city auditor to provide for the transfer of $49,632,500 within the general fund, to transfer $2,188,000 in appropriations between objects in certain non-general fund departments and divisions, to authorize appropriations within the neighborhood initiative sub-fund, to authorize transfers between sub-funds of $650,000, to authorize an appropriation within the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, and the Employee Benefits Fund, and to declare an emergency. This is, again, a standard piece of procedure that we do at the end of the year. Each year, the Department of Finance and Management conducts quarterly financial reviews to track department expenditures. As part of the 2024 third quarter financial review, the Department of Finance has identified budget surpluses and deficits in various categories of expenses. In order to properly align the budget with projected expenditures, it is necessary to transfer various funds among divisions within the general fund and non-general fund departments and divisions. This is standard financial review process that is conducted every fiscal year, which allows departments to operate without interruption through the end of 2024. Are any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I first move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Reemy, Weich, President Harden.
Amend it.
And now, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Reemy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 3035-2024 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31, 2025, for each of the several object classes for which the city of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of said city of Columbus, in the fund known as the general fund. During the said 12 months, from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of revenue, the amount of $1,228,75,000, and to declare an emergency. This, and the next two ordinances, represent the annual budget appropriation requests that are presented to city council for consideration each November. These ordinances collectively establish the mayor's budget, appropriations, and related amendments for fiscal year 2025. And I will be referring these committees, these ordinances, back to committee to allow us to have the necessary public hearings for adequate consideration. As you all are aware, each year, the mayor presents a budget to council. We then refer those back to committee so we can have public hearings to engage with the community, as well as for this council to look at that budget and also engage with the administration for final adoption at the top of the year. With that being said, if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move to refer this ordinance back to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Reemy, Weich, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
Next, we have ordinance 3036-2024 to make appropriations and transfers for the 12 months ending December 31, 2025, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary, and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to refer back to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Reemy, Weich, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
And finally, in regards to the 2025 budget, we have ordinance 3037-2024 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31, 2025, for select other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary, and to declare an emergency. At this time, I move to refer back to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Reemy, Weich, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
Thank you, Council President. May I move to the Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, tonight we have ordinance 3205-2024 to amend the 2024 capital improvements budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriations within the Development taxable bond fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Franklinton Development Association to perform due diligence, perform improvements, and acquire 89 West Park Avenue to authorize the expenditure of $550,000 from the Development taxable bond fund, to authorize expenditures prior to the purchase order, to advance funding per a predetermined schedule, and to declare an emergency. I am really, really excited about this piece of legislation, and I'm just the eye candidate tonight. I just get to pass it and read it. The person who's really put in the work is, this is my colleague, Councilmember Melissa Green, so I'm going to pass the floor to her.
Thank you so much, Chair Bangston. So, we are really incredibly excited for this grant. This grant is going to allow the FDA to acquire a building at 89 West Park Street and make it a permanent hub for community service organizations that are providing critical support to our most vulnerable neighbors here across Columbus. This location was once previously the home for the Columbus Coalition for the homeless. It's currently the home for Little Bottoms Three Store, that has been Free Store, which has been operating in this space since 2019, engaged in absolutely critical work to help improve our city's infant maternal mortality rates, while also providing critical supports to mothers and families with young children under the age of three. The additional space in this more than 21,000-square-foot building will be made available to similar community-serving organizations, with the vision of this space being a community resource hub that serves not just the west side area, but certainly the west side, but residents all across our city. The expenditure of that $550,000 authorized by this ordinance will allow them to purchase the building and pay the costs related to due diligence and building improvements. So, for those of you that had the opportunity to attend our last Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee meeting, you know that two out of every three of our cities' community service organizations this year that are providing lifesaving critical services to some of our most vulnerable friends, neighbors, and loved ones, two out of every three of those organizations in our city are going to end this calendar year in the red with deficit budgets. It's a really troubling statistic, considering the fact that those deficits are born this year while we still had access to ARPA dollars and supports through the COVID-19 relief funds that came into our city. And so, when we are looking at our budget, and we're talking about making sustainable investments in our city's critical human infrastructure, this is how we do it. The purchase of this building will go on to be able to offset costs for community-serving organizations in perpetuity, some of the hardest expenses in any nonprofit, or as I like to call them, tax-exempt businesses, budgets, some of the hardest expenses for them to fund, but some of the most important. If you don't have a building, you don't have a business. You don't have a place for people to come to receive the support that they need to help get them to their next. And so, I, again, I want to thank you, Chair Bangston, for your passion and just really being willing to partner with me on this and get this thing across the finish line. I cannot tell you how much of a positive impact this is going to make, and I am really excited to see our city trying to take a very strategic approach. How can we make critical, long-term investments today that are going to have payoff in perpetuity to help support our most vulnerable neighbors? So, thank you so much for your help with that.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Green, for your leadership and advocacy on this. I don't have as much west side roots as you, but you know, I got a little bit of west side cred in Franklinton, so I used to serve on the area commission, and we actually held our area commission meetings in this building. But as you pointed out, one, it's critical for our community, but two, this is a very valuable asset in a neighborhood that could have been easily gobbled up by development, but now it will continue to be able to serve that community and be a beacon of hope in that neighborhood. So, thank you for your leadership. And with that, I enthusiastically, I'm sorry, are there any comments or questions from our colleagues? Okay, we did our due diligence, okay? You guys got it. All right, we're good. With that, I enthusiastically move for a passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Reemy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. I'll have my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thanks, Council President. With your permission, I would like to move to the rules, or to page 24, to rules and policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, I want to, before I introduce the ordinance, I just want to set a little bit of context for what we are proposing this evening. In the next two decades, we will welcome an estimated 2 million more people to the greater Columbus region. Between 2014 and 2019, the region's total population grew by 6.4%, with immigrants contributing 26.4% of this overall growth. As the data has indicated, immigrants and refugees are a leading factor behind our population growth. Aging trends and lower birth rates mean even more of our growth will continue to come from migration and immigration. Due to a variety of global and regional circumstances, our region has become more diverse, a factor that will play an increasingly important role in central Ohio's culture and economy. Immigrants and refugees have long held an important place in our community and shaped the development of some of our historic and noteworthy neighborhoods like German Village and Italian Village. Immigrants contribute to all sectors of Columbus, from economic development, with immigrant entrepreneurs being one of the fastest-growing segments of small business owners, as well as contribution in the arts, music, and food industries. After coming into office in 2022... After coming into office in 2022, my office contracted with the Ohio State University School of Social Work to conduct a research study that we titled "Immigrants Make Columbus" to hear directly from our immigrant community through a series of town halls, a student-focused photo project with, and smaller group round tables. While immigrants and refugees contribute significantly to our community, bringing cultural diversity, economic growth, and valuable skills, they often face challenges in accessing city resources, services, and navigating new systems. After hearing from hundreds of members from the immigrant and refugee community, as well as community-based organizations that work with new and emerging communities, the OSU School of Social Work compiled a list of recommendations that we shared in a public meeting earlier this year. At the top of the list was a recommended commission on immigrant and refugee affairs that will serve as a platform to ensure that immigrant refugee voices are heard, addressed, heard and addressed, improving their ability to integrate, thrive, and contribute to our community. Council's Legislative Research Department looked at U.S. cities with comparable immigrant population growth that have also had commissions that helped to inform the commission makeup and focus that would best suit the City of Columbus. Today's legislation is a proposal of this commission. It will be comprised of 15 community members from across the immigrant diaspora, including at least one person under the age of 25. This is yet another strategy to ensure that we have the infrastructure in place to address the challenges that will arise with our continued population growth. And now, I'd like to introduce ordinance 2517-2024 to enact Chapter 175 of the Columbus City Code to create the Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. Woo! All right, we have three speakers on this ordinance, so I would like to invite our first speaker up to the podium, Mr. Joe Garrity, the Senior Director of Government Affairs and Community Relations at Morpsy, followed by Kelly Fuller, and then Dr. Seleshy. So, Mr. Garrity, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden, President Protam Dorans, and Chair Barosa de Padilla. My name is Joe Garrity. It's a pleasure to be with all of you this evening. I serve as the Senior Director of Government Affairs at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. We always like to say, our friends call us Morpsy. And so, we represent 90 different local governments in a 15-county region. Those are urban communities, suburban communities, rural communities, and we provide programs, services, and funding related to transportation, land use, sustainability, data, and economic prosperity. Our work is very diverse. If you're engaged in environmental issues, you may have been at our Summit on Sustainability with 800 different leaders last month. If you're engaged on mobility efforts, you may work with us on Link Us and the Transit Supportive Infrastructure Committee to build out these trails and sidewalks across Cota's service area. And if you're interested in having an impact on the affordability crisis, you could have collaborated with us on our regional housing strategy and partnered with us in a Housing for All forum. What's central to all of these issues and opportunities that Morpsy works on, the unifying theme or core to that work is centered on growth, and central Ohio is projected to grow. We will be a region of over 3 million people by 2050, but we can't take that growth for granted because it can change. If you take a closer look at the demographic trends, they reveal to us that birth rates are declining in central Ohio and death rates are slowly increasing. This is a trend that is going to continue. When you look at our projected growth to 2050, 76% of our anticipated population will increase, and it will come from outside of the region. And international migration is going to play a major role in our growth by 2050. Let's just look in the past, say, 15 years. International migration has accounted for more than half, again, more than half of central Ohio's total net migration. This underscores the critical need in being a welcoming community and a welcoming region. It is for this reason and more, Morpsy strongly supports the creation of the Commission on Immigrants and Refugee Affairs. In closing, the question that this generation must face, and I think it was very fitting to have Kevin Wheeler speak earlier about the City of Columbus coming of age, the question isn't, will we have the swagger of a big city? It's, can we get better if we get bigger? To thrive in the years ahead, we must plan for growth and remember that growth requires openness, and we can ensure that every resident has that opportunity to thrive and grow in our growing region. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity, and thank you for your support of Morpsy. I'm a dear friend, so I'm glad that you could be here today, also talking about the impact on the region. So, with that, Kelly, come on down. Next, we have Kelly Fuller, the Senior Vice President of Foundations at the Columbus Chamber.
Thank you, President Harden, Protam Dorans, and Honorable Members of Columbus City Council. As mentioned, my name is Kelly Fuller, and I serve as the Senior Vice President of the Columbus Chamber Foundation within the Columbus Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony and support of the creation of a Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. The Columbus Chamber, in fact, enthusiastically supports this creation as Ohio is home to an ever-growing community of immigrants and refugees. As neighbors, taxpayers, business owners, and workers, they are an integral part of Ohio's diverse and thriving communities and make extensive contributions that benefit us all. The Columbus Chamber believes in this vibrancy and potential that these communities bring to our region. We also recognize that the business community needs reliable and skilled workers to fill vital roles in every industry, while also seeing the incredible potential that our immigrant refugee friends and neighbors is not fully utilized at this point. This gap is in part because employers may not have all the information they need to navigate unfamiliar circumstances. It is also our belief that much can be accomplished when the business community creates space to hear from our new friends, neighbors, and coworkers as we all strive for more inclusive and creative workplaces. Having a forum to identify areas of collaboration will make for a better workplace and community throughout our region. Over the last two years, thank you to Columbus City Council. The Chamber has partnered with organizations like Jewish Family Services, Us Together, Welcoming City, and Community Refugee and Immigration Services to listen and learn how we can best work together to a common goal of prosperity for all. As a result of a collective of voices, cultures, and perspectives, we created a guidebook to promote the hiring, promotion, and retention of a global workforce. An employer guide to hiring global talent in central Ohio is the result of those conversations. Hearing from newly arrived individuals to spending time with those who have been part of the fabric of this community for decades, we had conversations on everything from the necessary paperwork to American interview customs that differed from country of origin to trauma that has been experienced as many left dire situations to come to this country and to Columbus. In fact, meeting with those who have lived experience, we learned for many who have experienced trauma, the American workplace can actually be a place full of stimuli that can trigger some of those traumatic responses. At our chamber, we want to continue to drive the prosperity and growth in this region through connections, resources, and advocacy, and with intention to seek to convene the many voices and bring the Columbus region together to network and drive the entire culture. The Columbus Chamber fully supports the creation of the Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs and looks forward to the opportunity to support this great work. Thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you for being here today. I want to also just commend the Chamber on the work that you have done to make all of the programs at the Chamber and the resources at the Chamber more accessible to communities, both Black and Brown, immigrant and refugee, to ensure that we are investing in our people and families, because an investment in them is an investment in all of us and an investment in a stronger Columbus. So, thank you, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
So, Dr. Seleshy is the President and CEO of Ethiopian and Towanado. Did I say it?
Yes.
Always. I'm going to get better and better every time. Social Services or ETSS. Dr. Seleshy, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President Harden, members of the City Council, my dear friend, Councilmember Lourdes Padilla, for sponsoring this historical commission for refugees and immigrant affairs, which is really historical. I'm very proud and honored to be part of this historical team on the formation of the commission. We need this commission now more than ever because we are facing uncertain and challenging times. So, my name is Seleshy Asfaw. I am the President and CEO for Ethiopian Towanado Social Services, an organization, a prominent organization serving refugees and immigrants in central Ohio for the last 25 years. What we basically do is really, we work with workforce development programs, both self-employment and traditional employment, including English-speaking speakers for other languages. We do youth and children's services from early childhood education all the way middle school, elementary school, and high school for college preparation and youth employment programs. Health and wellness, and through the mental and wellness, you know, prevention programs that because trauma and mental health becomes a big issue in our community. Community participation and engagement, this is a challenge that we have, our refugee immigrants participating and engaging on their issues is a challenge, but we are working and educating our community leaders. Our newest program or department is a resettlement program, which we welcome new Americans at their port and tries to be self-sufficient within 90 days. Since the exemption, since the exemption of the resettlement department, we settled over 477 refugees here in central Ohio. And in general, overall, we serve over 13,000 individuals in our city for the last federal fiscal year. So, why we are here and why refugee immigrants, really, as you know, refugee immigrants are the fabric of our city, and they are vital for our economic stability and prosperity. So, they brought their talent, they brought their culture, they brought their innovations, and bring our city, one of the dynamic and welcoming city, because, you know, we got the welcomingness from our city council. And the formation of this council, this commission, what I'm supporting is really, number one, will advise the city council the issues and the challenges that refugee immigrant communities are facing. Number two, this body will advocate on behalf of refugee immigrants, not only the city council, even other policymakers. Number three, it will serve as a bridge between the city council and the new American community. And number four, fostering belongingness. I feel now I am belonging here because you gave me a chance to make my voice on behalf of my community. So, the belongingness is an important part that will be part that you are embracing, that this is your house, this is your body, so that we become part of the decision-making process. So, we are very, very happy part of this historical moment. Thank you so much, and I will support this commission wherever you need from us and from our community. I really appreciate for you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seleshy. Thank you for always being a voice, and thank you for being part of this process from the beginning to the end. I know that we've spent a lot of time on this this evening, and while this is not a council that we need to do a lot of convincing, and while this is not a community where we need to do a lot of convincing, I think that it's important, especially at a time when there is so much rhetoric about who immigrants are, about who refugees are, that we show that we are standing with our community, that we are supporting our community, that we are ensuring that while we make investments, whether your family has been here for generations or if you are choosing to make Columbus home, that there is a place for you, and that we are just making those very, sometimes minor tweaks in the system to make it accessible for all, because we know that when we invest in those that are furthest away from justice, all boats rise. It makes it easier for everyone across the system. So, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for being part of the process again. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just want to thank, because this has been such a long, a two-year process that we have embarked on to get here, I just want to thank my friend and the new director of the Department of Neighborhoods, Director Kim Douglas. I want to thank Assistant Director Todd Diefenreifer, New American Program Coordinator, Abdi Sufi, and for their support and for the work ahead. It seems like there's been a lot to be done, but there's a lot more ahead of us to do. I also want to thank Chris Maitland from our Legislative Research Department who worked on this, and of course, my aides, Jessica Casares and Amaris Lamuz, who helped with this effort for the past two years to get us to this point so that we could really launch this commission. With that, I open it up to my colleagues if you have any questions or comments. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. Thank you for your work putting this together. It's so imperative that we celebrate what makes Columbus so great, and, you know, is very passionate about this, and coming from the Northland area and just so much diversity up there. It's just a great opportunity to make sure that everybody's voice is heard, and like Dr. Seleshy said, that we have the opportunity to learn from everyone what's important to them and what they need in our community. So, I just want to applaud you and thank you very much for the work that you've done to make sure that this got to us tonight.
Any other comments, questions?
Just congratulations. I know that you've been working on this for a very long time, and there are certain nights at council where it feels like we are taking a step forward for our community, and this is certainly one of these nights because of this legislation and your leadership. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President. And I want to thank all my colleagues for the work that you do every day for all of our communities, but certainly for being supportive through this endeavor. I'm so excited for this commission and for the work that lays ahead of us and for the community that we will build where everyone, everyone in the City of Columbus feels a sense of belonging, feels seen, feels heard, and feels supported by their city and all of their leaders. And with that, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deok Howard Dorans, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
And next, I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deok Howard Dorans, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Got ourselves a commission. Okay, with that, Council President, should I move to my committees?
Sure, let's use some time.
Okay, great. So, I am now going to move forward. We have six ordinances today, five, sorry, just kidding, five ordinances today in public service and transportation. The first ordinance is 2926-2024 to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Strosser Paving Company Incorporated for the roadway improvements, East 20th Avenue, and the intersection improvements, North Fourth Street at East 19th Avenue Projects, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,403,286.05 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the projects and to declare an emergency. The Metro Scroll Roadway Improvements Project includes a new traffic signal at 19th Avenue and North Fourth Street, curb extensions, ADA ramps, sidewalk, storm sewer, and related underground utilities. There will also be roadway improvements to 20th Avenue from North Fourth Street to the east end of 20th Avenue, including street reconstruction, curb ramp, sidewalk, and replacement of existing street lighting and LED lighting. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deok Howard Dorans, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 2929-2024 to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Streets and Highways Non-Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into contract with Strosser Paving Company Incorporated for the resurfacing 2024 Project 2 contract, to authorize the expenditure of up to $13,605,755.07 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and the Streets and Highways Non-Bond Fund, Non-Bond Fund for the contract and to declare an emergency. So, this is another round of resurfacing that will repair and resurface 99 city streets and the construction of 326 ADA curb ramps along those streets. So, here on the screen, Show and Tell is back, is a really unhelpful map and grid, but wait, there's more. Tomorrow, we will have a collaborative post with me and my buddy and your buddy, Charles, from DPS Instagram page, if you don't follow, 10 out of 10 recommend, that will show residents an easy way to resurface, to see the resurfacing schedule and map. So, Mark, can you please roll the tape of this instructional video, because we want to teach people how to fish? This is where you can go to find, on our website, where you can find the actual map that will really be helpful, because you can see it and you can read it, of which of these streets will be resurfaced. will be resurfaced. So you can find your street here. As a reminder, the way that streets get resurfaced is through 311. So if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to 311. And hang on to the big debut tomorrow on our Instagram. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Pedia, De Alcauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Rimi Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Great, next we have 2935, that ends show and tell, by the way, if you were wondering. Okay, next we have ordinance 29352024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance and the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of six single axle and four tandem axle live body trucks with the snow equipment from FYDA Freightliner Columbus Incorporated to authorize the transfer of appropriation within the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund to authorize the expenditure of $3,862,646 from the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service is responsible for maintaining Columbus roadways, which includes filling potholes, street sweeping, mowing, alley resurfacing, snow and ice removal. These vehicles have reached the end of their life, six will be replaced, and two will be additions to the fleet. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Pedia, De Alcauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Rimi Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Great, next we have ordinance 29992024 to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with G&amp;G Concrete Construction LLC for the resurfacing 2024 Brick and Concrete Rehabilitation Project to authorize the expenditure of $1,593.03 and $385.05 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This resurfacing ordinance particularly addresses 11 concrete streets and 14 brick streets. The work consists of repairing and replacing concrete slabs, sawing, sealing, concrete joints, repairing and replacing brick bases and surface courses, and repairing designated brick crosswalks. So this is also part of the resurfacing project. So you can see if you live on a street that might look like one of the ones that I described, you can find it also on that post. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa de Pedia, De Alcauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Rimi Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And finally, I have ordinance 302124 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Rich Street Traffic Signal Interconnect Project to authorize the expenditure of $1,226,334.07 and $78.07 from Street Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This project will enable the Department of Public Service to replace traffic signals at four different intersections, including Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, and Grant Avenue. Along with new traffic signals, this project will also include improvements to the intersections like street lights, improved curbs and sidewalks, and improved drainage. The estimated notice to proceed date is December 22, 2024. Director, just a quick question, since this is on major thoroughways in downtown, what can folks expect during the time of construction in terms of impact to traffic, especially during those peak hours?
Good evening, President Harden and Chair Barosa de Pedia, members of council. This is a traffic signal impact project, so they're going to be replacing the traffic signals and the inner workings of the traffic signals as part of this project. You know, there'll be intermittent construction zones through there, but it should not be nearly as impactful as some of the other projects.
Great, and it should be hopefully during holiday season time when folks might be taking some time off. So hopefully we'll, we'll hope for some good weather and a little less traffic in downtown if you live, work, or play in the area. So do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Pedia, De Alcauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Rimi Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
And that for real is all for me this evening.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Recession, I apologize. Thank you for the assist, council member. Thank you for the assist. Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Pedia, De Alcauer, Dorans, Faber, Green, Rimi Weich, President Harden.
We'll reconvene in five minutes for zoning.
Meeting number 56 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to move to the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing done, the Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Doran's chair that committee. All members, sir and women. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, first, a little bit of housekeeping. Will the clerk please read the numbers of legislation in the zoning committee this evening that require waiver of second reading?
Twenty-nine, twenty-one, thirty, forty-seven, thirty, fifty-nine, twenty-nine, twenty-three, thirty, thirty-eight, thirty, forty-three, thirty, forty-six, thirty, fifty-eight, dash, twenty, twenty-four.
Thank you, clerk. I now move to waive second reading in those items read aloud.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Now allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for a council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation for ordinance that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if we have a public speaker signed to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask speakers limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of the city council. Only those who own property within one hundred and twenty-five feet of an address the subject of a variance request are legally able to make public comments on a variance pursuant to advice from the city attorney's office. All speakers in council variances, including city staff, air commissions, applicants, and members of public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives in the air commission are always able to speak on an ordinance but do not need to fill out a speaker slip, but we do ask that you alert city staff of your intentions to speak at this committee hearing. We did have one public speaker slip filled out for this evening, but that speaker has since rescinded. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I would now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, show the truth, nothing but the truth that you shall answer in paying some penalty or perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich, the Department of Building and Zoning Services, and Dan Bleschmuth, the Department of Public Service, have been sworn in. First, we have ordinance two-nine, two-one, dash, twenty, twenty-four to rezone five-one, four-one Cos Gray Road, being two-hundred-and-forty-six-point-three-five-plus acres located in the west side of Cos Gray Road, nineteen-hundred feet north of Hayden Run Road, from PUD six, Plan Unit Development District, LI Limited Industrial District, L-two, LAR twelve, Limited Apartment Residential District, CPD Commercial Plan Development District, and LI Limited Industrial District. We are aware the applicant is in the process of finalizing some amendments for this request, and due to the fact, I move to postpone this ordinance to next week's zoning committee agenda on November twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty-four.
The row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Postponed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance three-zero-four-seven, dash, twenty, twenty-four to rezone one-six-six-one East Hudson Street, being point-four-seven-plus acres located in the southwest corner of East Hudson Street and Bitler Boulevard, from C-three Commercial District to R-four Residential District. Site consists of six undeveloped parcels, and the requested rezoning will allow development of a single and two-unit dwelling. Proposal has approval from city staff, development commission, and the South Linden Area Commission. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance three-zero-five-nine, dash, twenty, twenty-four to rezone two-one, two-one Velma Avenue, being thirty-four-point-three-two-plus acres located in the north side of Black and Gold Boulevard, three-hundred-and-fifty-plus feet west of Velma Avenue, from M Manufacturing District, R-four Residential District, CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Site consists of portions of two parcels of historic stadium and athletic fields, and the requested rezoning will allow commercial uses to continue at this location. This will fulfill a previous commitment to rezone the site as required in previous ordinance dating back to nineteen ninety-nine, in order to bring it up to the current site into compliance. While there is no area commission or civic association as part of the city, proposal has approval from city staff and the development commission. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next move in the council variances portion of our agenda, first, we have ordinance two-nine, two-three, dash, twenty, twenty-four. Granted variance provisions of section three-three-three-three-point-oh-two, AR twelve, ARLD, Air One Apartment Residential District use, three-three-three-two-point-zero-five-A four Air District lot with requirements, three-three-three-two-point-one-five, R-four Area District requirements, three-three-three-three-point-one-zero, AR twelve Area District requirements, three-three-three-three-point-one-eight, building lines, three-three-three-point-two-six, height district, three-three-three-point-three-five-G private garages, and three-three-three-three-point-four-one-H standards of Columbus City Code, so property located at five-one, four-one Cos Gray Road to allow reduced development standards for mixed-use residential development, and the LAR twelve Limited Apartment Residential District. Similar to the early rezoning ordinance on our agenda tonight, I move to postpone this ordinance to next week's zoning committee on November twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty-four.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance three-zero-three-eight, dash, twenty, twenty-four to grant variance provisions of section three-three-five-six-point-oh-three, C-four permitted use of three-three-one-two-point-two-nine parking space, three-three-one-two-point-four-nine required parking, and three-three-one-two-point-five-six electric vehicle parking administrative requirements, three-three-seven-two-point-six-oh-four setback requirements, three-three-seven-two-point-zero-six-five, CD building standards, three-three-seven-two-point-six-oh-seven landscaping and screening, the Columbus City Code, so property located at eight-seventy Parsons Avenue, to allow mixed-use development, reduced development standards in the C-four Commercial District. This site consists of one parcel developed with commercial uses in the new zoning urban center district. Because the applicant filed a site complaint prior to zoning being passed this past summer, the project is being considered under the former C-four Commercial District. Staff supports the project being reviewed under the former C-four District because it has been designed well before the design and standards have been made available to the general public and applicants. The requested council variance will allow a new mixed-use development with two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eight square feet of commercial space and eighty-six dwelling units. A council variance is required because the current zoning does not allow for ground floor residential uses. Variance to parking spaces, required parking, building setback, building design elements and landscaping screening are also included in this request. The proposal has approval from city staff and the South Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the five staffs, the finance council.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number three-zero-four-three, dash, twenty, twenty-four to grant variance provisions of section three-three-three-two-point-zero, two-nine, SR Suburban Residential District, three-three-seven-zero-point-of-five permitted use of three-three-one-two-point-four-nine required parking, the Columbus City Code, so property located at six-nine-five-nine Laurel Boat Lane, to allow a type-H family childcare with used required parking in the LSR Limited Suburban Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance proposes that dwelling be used as a type-A childcare facility. Since the primary use of the property will still be a single-unit dwelling, city staff has no objection to the requested use, which must comply with the higher revised code requirements and be inspected by the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services. The request also includes a variance to required parking. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Greater Southeast Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the five staffs, the finance council.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
And finally, move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance three-zero-four-six, dash, twenty, twenty-four to grant variance provisions of section three-three-one-two-point-four-nine required parking, three-three-three-two-point-two-five-B maximum side yard permitted, three-three-three-two-point-two-six-C three minimum side yard permitted the Columbus City Code, so the property located at one-six-six-one East Hudson Street, to allow reduced development standards to the single and two-unit dwelling in the R-four Residential District. This is a companion council variance, the rezoning we heard earlier in our agenda. This proposed development will allow a single and two-unit dwellings, and also variances with required parking and side yard requirements. Proposal has approval from city staff and the South Linden Area Commission. And want to thank our South Linden Area Commission, Ms. Beg, being here with us here tonight. If there are no questions or colleagues from my colleagues, I first move to accept our staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next move to adopt the five staffs, the finance council.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
And finally, move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next, we have ordinance three-zero-five-eight, dash, twenty, twenty-four to grant variance provisions of section three-three-three-two-point-three-eight-H private garage. The Columbus City Code, so property located at ten-fifty-six Billy Drive, to allow habitable space with a detached garage in the SR Suburban Residential District. Site consists of one parcel with a single-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will allow the current attached garage be converted into additional living space with new attached garage and habitable space located within. A council variance is required because the habitable space within a garage is only allowed when connected directly to the habitable space within a dwelling. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Midwest Area Commission. This is the ordinance. We did have one public speaker signed to speak against, but again, that speaker is not here with us at council. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the five staffs, the finance council.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next move to amend estimate of the clerk.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance three-zero-six-zero, dash, twenty, twenty-four to grant variance provisions of section three-three-six-three-point-oh-one, M Manufacturing District, three-three-seven-zero-point-oh-five permitted uses, three-three-oh-nine-point-one-four height district, three-three-one-two-point-two-one landscaping and screening, three-three-one-two-point-four-nine required parking, and three-three-six-three building lines in a M Manufacturing District, the Columbus City Code, so property located at two-one-five-zero Innis Road, to allow mixed residential development, reduced development standards in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a hardware store, and the council variance will allow a hundred-and-seventy-three-unit mixed residential development on the site, consisting of seven apartment buildings and ten, I'm sorry, ten detached single-unit dwellings. Additional variances to allow increased building height and reduced parking lot screening, reduce required parking, and reduced building lines are included in the request. The proposal has residential development, will be the subject competitive funding process by a high-level financing agency, which requires certain land attributes, including compliant zoning. Proposal has approval from city staff and the North Linden Area Commission, and want to thank our commissioners for being here tonight with us. If there are any, do I have any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next move to adopt the five staffs, the finance council.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next move to amend to emergency.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
And finally, move for passage as amended.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in tonight's zoning agenda.
Any committee, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is reconvened. The next meeting to come before council is the Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, chaired by Councilmember Deocauer. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Just one ordinance this evening in my committee. Ordinance twenty-seven, forty-nine, dash, twenty, twenty-four to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Harrell's LLC for the purchase of golf course pesticides for the Recreation Parks Department, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize expenditure of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and sixty cents for the purchase of golf turf pesticides from the Recreation Parks Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the purchase of pesticides that are used at golf courses owned by the city. Harrell's has previously supplied these pesticides for our golf courses and has always delivered them in a timely manner and with no issues. A bid waiver is being requested because the pesticide manufacturer utilizes a purchasing program that packages pesticides into bundles and offers deep discounts and rebates and sets pricing for all distributors, resulting in equal pricing between distributors. The city will be receiving a rebate of fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Council is the Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Housing, Homelessness, and Building, we have ordinance twenty-nine, forty-nine, dash, twenty, twenty-four to agree to an adjustment to the city's boundaries by consenting to transfer approximately twelve-point-four-seven acres from the city of Columbus to the city of Upper Arlington. This ordinance is a boundary adjustment between the city of Columbus and the city of Upper Arlington, which has been proposed. The site is right-of-way along the Henderson Road corridor, from roughly Moreland Drive West to the east, to just beyond Chevy Chase Court to the west. The proposed adjustment moves the city of Columbus corporate boundary northward along Henderson Road. The transfer will place the entirety of the right-of-way within the city of Upper Arlington. With that said, I'd like to move to postpone this ordinance one week to November twenty-fifth.
Clerk, please call the row on ordinance twenty-eight, fifty-nine, dash, twenty, twenty-four.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Deocauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Refer to committee.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you. Postponed. Next committee coming before council is the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Sorry, y'all. Thank you, Council President. Tonight in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have two ordinances on second reading. The first one is ordinance twenty-nine, oh-six, dash, twenty, twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute a grant agreement with the Tony R. Wells Foundation, or DBA, the Wells Foundation, in an amount of up to five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-seven-hundred dollars to provide time-limited payments of unrestricted funds to individuals engaged in an economic mobility initiative that is operated by a nonprofit organization, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-seven-hundred dollars from the Neighborhood Economic Development Fund, to pay for administrative and/or staffing expenses incurred prior to purchase, order execution, and to authorize the advancement of funds on a predetermined schedule. This funding appropriated today is incredibly exciting. It's going to provide a portion of funds for a really exciting new pilot program, the city of Columbus's Economic Mobility Accelerator, which will provide a five-hundred-dollar-a-month unrestricted cash assistance for twenty-four months to at least a hundred-and-sixty-nine individuals who are engaged in workforce development and economic mobility programs at one of six of our partner organizations. The goal of this initiative is to improve economic and financial security and housing and employment stability, as well as improve well-being for what is often termed asset-limited, income-constrained, and employed individuals, or ALIS for short. And it focuses on supporting individuals who are working and earning above the federal poverty level, yet are still struggling to afford basic expenses. And because they're above that federal poverty level, these families have fallen off what we call the benefits cliff, meaning they're not eligible to access critical public supports that both help families meet their basic needs and often make it possible for parents to enter and stay in the workforce. We know that using that federal poverty level guide as the sole qualifier for public supports is incredibly problematic because it was established in the nineteen-seventies based on the cost of food, and it doesn't capture any of the reality of the growing expenses related to household costs or healthcare or childcare. And so, to really drive this home, the federal poverty level for a family of four is twenty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year. But in twenty-twenty-two, we knew here in Franklin County that the minimum cost to live and work in our current economy is ninety-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars a year for that same family, and that's a huge disparity. And so, while we have seen some slightly positive improvements in recent years in the overall federal poverty rate here in the city, we also know that that number of households that falls within that ALIS category that's struggling to get by is